Today is Friday, May 16th. 1:30 PM, it's a meeting of the Acushnet Board of Selectmen. Is there motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. As a reminder, this meeting will be audio and video recorded. Please rise for the special reasons.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, liberative, and justice for all.
Alright, we've got a pretty beefy agenda, but I'm gonna go out of order. We've got our town moderator here, so no sense in him waiting around for us to do our other business. We'll go over the warrant and the articles. So with that, if you could turn to that in your book. Turn it over to Mr. Kelly to walk us through this. We do have a number of these that are sort of consent items, pro forma, but go ahead.
Yeah, this is, the articles in the warrant, we do the budget at another meeting, Mr. Chairman. Article one is the typical receive reports. Article two is to pay prior year bills. We don't have any, it'll be in the warrant, but it will not probably be moved. Article three is to pay cable access. Four and five, well, article three through article 10 is the consent agenda. It's in the warrant every year, and it's just various articles to allow the town to spend chapter 90, the fair share amendment, et cetera. Article 11 is gonna be taken care of in the budget, so I ask that that be removed.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Article 12 here will be renumbered, of course, and I ask that the fire EMS vehicle repair fund line be taken out of the table. That'll be taken care of in the budget.
Okay.
That's what we just voted on, right?
Yep.
So that was article 11. So article 12 has it listed as one of the revolving funds, which we're just removing that as a revolving fund. It's just Kelly said it'll be part of the budget.
Alright, and we'll just assume that as far as the numbering of the articles, we go through it. I'm going to ask that article 13 be changed to $30,000 for the MS4 consultant services.
Okay.
And article 14 be increased to $70,000 for the stormwater MS4 stabilization count.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The net's gonna be the same, but it's just putting it in various articles. Changing it to stabilization more. Article 15, compensated absence, $50,000. That is to take care of buyback and to build up the fund, because we know in three to four years, there's going to be major retirements at the schools, and there very likely will be some in town.
Okay.
Health insurance stabilization fund, I ask that that amount be decreased, and it be 150 total.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The OPEB trust account articles should be 100,000.
Yep, okay.
The general stabilization fund, I ask that that be decreased to 100,000 from 200,000.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I ask that the capital expense stabilization fund, which is now 100,000, be increased to 200,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The opioid settlement fund transfer article, $9,109.28 is something that has to be done every year with the opioid settlement funds.
Okay.
There's an article here for the acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, and Veteran Tax Work Off Program. It's the acceptance of the statute. It does not cost anything. I'm going to probably renumber that and put that elsewhere in the budget.
Okay.
Veterans Tax Work Off Program funding through this article, and the Senior Tax Work Off Program funding through this article, I'm going to ask that they be removed. That'll be taken up in a different manner through the overlay.
Removed from the whole, are we looking?
It's funding, it's a function, Mr. Chairman, it's just-
So without abolishing the programs?
No, absolutely not. It's a senior program in the veterans program. When we get to that later on, we'll have that discussion about how they're funded, and it's not through free cash.
Okay.
Youth Employee Service Program, $30,000. That will remain.
Okay.
School roof ban repayment, $275,000. That'll take care of half of the remaining ban.
Says 250 here, is that, we're bumping it up to 275?
Mike says 275.
It's 275, yeah.
Oh, it's wrong inside, so he's in a different parties. So he's in the table. Where's the table?
Table, I got the table right here.
Yeah, see, it says 275 there. In your thing, it's wrong.
We were changing while we're out. Yep.
That's gonna change on a bunch of different ones. Jamie, you're just gonna mark that up.
Right.
Take part there.
That I'm asking to increase to...
665.
Thank you, I have a-
665,000, Mr. Kelly. You're jumping to article 26, correct, Mr. Kelly?
Yep.
So that table, the cumulative balance is 665,000.
What's the reason?
Some of those articles on 26 changed, so it changes this. That's a, that's a, the one that we're on, that table.
Yeah.
Page 22 of the bottom table. This number's cumulative from article 26. You gotta jump to article 26, which changes cumulative total.
Got it, okay.
Just some rearranging of things.
The article verbiage up to article 26 will be changed, and the numbers for what's in the various stabilization accounts will be the numbers that we get off Munis exactly when we go to printing. That way, town meeting will have current figures of what's in all the stabilization accounts. It changes month to month, week to week, depending on interest. Article 26. This is the general free cash capital funding article. Purchase and installation of a new compressor for filling SCBA bottles requested by the fire department not to exceed $80,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Update hardware, software, printers, and copiers requested by the IT department not to exceed 40,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Two police cruisers, purchase of two police cruisers and retrofit from the police department not to exceed $150,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Services to update chart of accounts from the accounting department. This will be combined with an existing article. This article itself is not to exceed 30,000. The prior article was 20. The reason for this is we're not in compliance with the uniform Massachusetts accounting system.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next is installing four HPAC units to complete the HVAC repair and updates at the COA, and this is requested by the COA, it's not to exceed $40,000. That's a change.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There is some grant money available on this.
Okay.
To purchase a used truck for the maintenance and plowing town buildings, has requested it not to exceed 45,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
General code compilation update not to exceed 5,000 requested by the town clerk.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
To purchase a street sweeper requested by DPW not to exceed $275,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 27 in this packet, but it'll be renumbered, to see if the town will vote to transfer 200,000 from EMS receipt reserve account, and to borrow the sum of 650,000 to fund the purchase of a fire truck. And then the rest of the language is the authorization for the borrowing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next article is the CPC article, what do you see upfront as far as appropriations on what is mandated by the Commonwealth on a year-to-year basis? However, the actual expenditures are in the table that follows. Administration is $13,000, and that is mandated, we rarely spend it, then it reverts to Relocation of historic memorials at the Russell Library from the undesignated balance, 60,000.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, I just wanna verify, so 60,000 because we don't know an official price on this. I still don't believe it's gonna cost 60,000. We don't have to spend the 60,000, so people know. That good fact to undesigned it?
Yes.
If we don't expend all of it?
It's up to-
Okay.
Kind, you would have to, whatever's not expended on moving that memorial, you would have to dissolve the article at a future town meeting for it to land back, and it would be available the following year.
Actually, everything that we don't spend in a particular year goes into it undesigned it.
On CPC articles, they can, like, they actually can dissolve themselves out?
They're just, it goes in, because that's why when you see the 13,000 for administrative costs, we never come even close to spending anything.
So it doesn't take a town meeting vote, like regular articles do with CPC?
But regular articles, yeah.
Okay.
None of you, I was gonna hold on that one as well, so thank you, Mr. Dean, please.
Painting renovations for the rear fence of Lawn Planet Museum, historic funds, 5,830. This completes the four sides requested by the Historic Commission. And then 8,000 from the Park Department, that would be under the open space and recreation heading, and that is to complete some work around Pope Park.
We just gotta check, we gotta fix that box.
Yeah, it's not historic.
I add recreation right on itself.
Yep. What do we, just a quick question, we're talking about paintings, painting for Lawn Planet, what are we doing with piling ways in the paint? You know, we've got the front painted, but the side is not, have we?
So I think when Jim Merritt paused on that, I don't know if there's something else that I'm missing on the north side of the building, but that building was all re-clapboard from the existing shingles, and I don't know if it's just because the kids left when Merritt left that it just never got completed. But I don't believe there's any outstanding article left. We had something for renovations to piling ways.
You would probably have to side it.
There's a bunch of siding in the cellar.
For safety purposes, you'd have to side it.
So, okay, something that we would have to explore.
After this, let's, maybe we can figure out what we need to do with that building, attack it in the November town meeting or something, so.
Okay.
The next three articles are placeholders for approving collective bargaining agreements. The next article is from the schools. It's the annual article concerning the school's special education reserve fund and keeping it at an appropriate level.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the next article concerns the energy savings, and you had a meeting with the school committee today, so.
Yeah, I can give you a little backstory here. So we met with superintendent Ron Hood, the chair, and Pat, Patrick, the outgoing business manager. And this original, the article that was originally submitted is the wrong one, but essentially what their, the new language would be to see if the town will vote to authorize a select board to enter an energy savings performance contract with TRAIN in accordance with Mass General Law for a term up to 20 years for defined energy management service projects in Acushnet Elementary and Ford Middle School, under which the energy savings resulting from the installed energy infrastructure and efficiency projects will be guaranteed by TRAIN for the term of the contract. The way this was explained to me is, and also what we've done, they've struck out any language about fund, how much it would cost, or two and a half overrides, but what this does, that all of the work that has been done with TRAIN, it would allow that contract, that relationship to exist. So if the town decides to move forward with phases of the project, or there are other things that could be potentially self-funded, this would allow the school department or the board, through, you know, the school department through the Board of Selectmen, to engage with TRAIN. It doesn't hold us to anything. We are going to verify with town council on both sides, from the school and with us, to make sure that this doesn't lock us into anything, and/or if we can get out of it, if we find another route. I did say, and I wasn't speaking on behalf of the board, but I was just speaking on behalf of myself, which is, with a new business manager coming in, two new school committee members, I would encourage them to run parallel tracks, which is, yes, you have this TRAIN option, which we know what that's all about, but also to consider looking at an RFP for, you know, another company, another method to solve the problem, what have you, and, you know, we may arrive at the same conclusion after going through that process, but I do feel that given the, how the vote went down, that we owe it to the taxpayers to look at it again, running a parallel track. We may end up at the same end conclusion, but that was my ask of the school committee chair, and, you know, you agreed in principle to that, and we take that message back to the board, but I don't, I personally don't believe it'd be an issue to put this forward so long as it doesn't bind us to anything, and town councils, the respective councils would give us that guidance.
Mr. Kelly, do you have anything on the golf article?
Pardon?
The golf article?
I was going to bring that up next.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Ward.
You have any?
I'm fine with changing the article to whatever language we need to accommodate that agreement.
And Mr. Ward, just to add in a little bit of context that I actually spoke with Patrick on too, this will actually help them finalize, they have a refrigeration project that they are funding, self-funding, that this falls under, so they won't have to go out to rebid for that as well, and as long as town council's okay with it, and we're not, like you said, tied to anything.
And I think, look, as I mentioned to the superintendent and to Ron, I don't think anybody's minimizing the issue over there. It's how do we, how do we fund it as a town? You know, is it, we try to take a run at it with going to the voters and asking for additional money, they said no, so we have to look at it differently. Is it through a 10-year, is it a ban, is it through existing funds, through stables? I don't know, but anyway, I think there's still a little bit of work to be done on this, but I think we owe it to everybody at least go through an exhaustive process, and not just say, well, they said no, we're not doing this anymore, so the door's still ajar.
Excellent.
There also needs to be an article to transfer 125,000 from golf course re-change earnings to ensure the bunker renovation slash replacement, because when we reviewed all of the articles and looked at their plans, we cannot use funding from this fiscal year, and the work's being done in the next fiscal year, so it has to be authorized through an article.
Okay. There was something about, said to me about some other article, I don't know anything about that other one, but I had the concern after I started thinking about, when it was brought up, about some other article, and I don't know, someone bought a piece of equipment or something like that, some crazy number, I'm like, we need to stop spending money on stuff like that, but I did ask Mr. Kelly to try to fund it, we need to fund at least 125, because when I looked at the golf's existing article, that when Mr. Tibbles came in, there was 101,000 dollars left in the article, and now there's 30,000 dollars left because they bought the spray up for 71,000 dollars, so that took it down to 30 grand. I said, the problem is, is they were thinking that they could use whatever remainder they had in their budget to supplement that bunker renovation of 135. The problem is, it's totally impossible, because you're not gonna get invoiced until the new fiscal year, and you can't carry those funds over because we close out July 15, so where, the way I see it is you're roughly 105,000 dollars short. Mr. Kelly said you might as well throw a little bit more at it because of change orders come in, or just this other matter's come up, so regardless of the fact, we need an article to fund what we've already committed ourselves for in bunker renovations, so that's what-
And anything further, cop paths repairs, all that type of thing, I think that would be appropriate maybe for the fall, but I think you need a comprehensive plan to be brought forward to this board to look at the, all of the expenditures that are coming in.
And I agree, I mean, look, we've, we've got a committee working on a plan to come back to us on a new facility, so I think that's gonna be a big piece of that, so I would hold off on any major expenditures until we know what all of that looks like and how it fits in, so.
We've done, well, they've done a number of requests with this board, Mr. Chairman, and as you know, I alluded to it a year or two ago, their run rate is 189,000 dollars above what they budgeted, right, from article money, you can't sustain that. We've bought a ton of new equipment, they're busting at the seams, now they're talking about a new maintenance building, and, you know, we need to take a hard look at what we have for equipment, start getting rid of some of the old stuff, and figuring out what we do have, and what, you know, can't be just spending 200,000, 150,000 dollars a year, so cop path work and stuff like that, we just authorized 135 in bunker work, three bunkers to get done this fiscal year, so we'll talk about the next one, next round of bunkers. I don't know, all this stuff's coming to a head, but again, like you just said, they got like 1.9 million in a stabilization, we're talking about a clubhouse, we wanna put down a big down payment out of that, out of stabilization, we can't burn, have that kind of a cash burn rate, so we need to come up with a better plan, right?
Yep.
If that's gonna come to fruition, so.
Correct. Alright.
And there are three articles from, that are zoning articles, as you know, that's under the purview of the planning board.
Okay, look, to be cleanup things, right?
One is to clean up the zoning map, to take the changes and put them all on one map. There is a cleanup as far as the solar bylaw, further clarification relating to the setbacks and security fences, and then there is one in reference to the accessory apartments.
Okay. So, Mr. Kelly, I do see that article, it's article 35 in his book, so we need to table article 35. Is there a motion to a table 35?
Well, I, I, no, I asked that we change the amount and the wording for-
Correct.
To 125 of bunker renovations.
That's fine, if you wanna supplement that.
Yep.
And then it's the budget and the two articles for sewer and golf enterprise funds, which I consider part of the budget.
Okay.
And we can do that at a further meeting, because the chair was able to get us a week from the permit.
Okay. Mr. Dakin is the moderator, do you have any questions about this document? And you're good?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna thank you and town administrator, Mr. Kelly, and the rest of the board for your diligent work, and I'm good to go.
Alright, so with that, is there a motion to, I guess, to accept the warrant as presented? Would be relevant changes?
And we'll format it and everything, and have a document at the next meeting.
Okay.
And we'll also have the, I'll ask the finance committee for their letter to the citizens, and the board will draft their letter to the citizens.
Alright, sounds good. Call for a motion? Did you make that motion?
The chairman did mention something, I mean, there's a motion to accept what we've just did on the warrant. I'll do that, but there's a lot of changes and edits to be made, so we can't just say a motion to accept a warrant as how it's presented, right?
Correct.
Can I, can I, can I get a motion that this is the extent of the article?
Yeah, we're closing at that.
Called article, that was closed.
But-
Let's just memorialize this meeting, and then we'll have a final, final when we meet next week, okay? So it's a motion to accept the changes as presented in the individual motions?
Yeah, close the warrants.
Close the warrants, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, good. Alright, don't have you gonna fall around it. Good. One other item, I guess, again, Brad, I don't wanna have you hanging around, so we go in there, we're talking about the HERO Act and the different exemptions at the last meeting, I feel like we've discussed this already, but just to get some further clarification from you on what we should be accepting, or what would be in our best interest.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. As much as we wanna provide as much-
More info, huh, Brad?
Yeah, we wanna provide as much for everybody, but there's only so much that we can do.
So I redid it again at 3.5, which is the actual increase for the state of Massachusetts.
Okay.
So, where before I had it at 3%, I was just giving a guesstimate.
Alright.
This is a little bit more exact, and I only did it for three years.
Got it, so the one that we're accepting, or we'd be approving would be, it's 3%?
3.5%.
3.5% above inflation?
Right, okay.
Versus the-
Doubling it.
Yeah.
We don't wanna double it.
Yeah.
It would cost the town a lot more.
Alright, I think that's helpful, do we need a-
For the HEROES Act, you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I'll make a motion to accept the proposal by the veteran- Yeah, no, I'll make a motion to accept the proposal by the Veterans Agent for the HEROES Act at 3.5%.
Second. All those in favor? All right. Motion carries. Thank you, Brad.
All right.
Thank you, Brad.
Brad, do you need, do you need a motion? So we just did it for this calendar year. Well, we need to do that every year based on CPI because it's the inflation rate, so would you need for us to do it? Or can we just make a motion to approve the current CPI at 3.5%?
I think it has to be done every year going into Maura Healey at whatever it is.
Okay.
It kind of stinks because if it's at 5% next year, it's at 5%. You know what I mean? I don't think you can just set a, a number to it, like 3.5, just because that's what it is this year.
Got it.
I mean, I can, I'm gonna, I'll research that tomorrow.
We all, we all kind of hope for the cost of groceries. We don't have CPI at 5%. We did experience a period it was up to 9%, but I would argue in some cases 18%, but.
Okay. Good. All right, sorry to drag you in.
No worries.
All right. Good. So now we've got a couple executive sessions.
Mr. Chairman, because we, we have to, we have a Veterans Property Tax Abatement Program in the warrant, and that's something that we also need to vote, but there's some, after printing off some, off the municipal law, I talked to Mr. Fish about this, there's some things that we need to have and we need to consider. So can I just take a moment?
Yeah, sure.
About veterans?
Yeah.
So I, I have this, Mr. Kelly Koska, actually, when we were going back and forth about this funding source, as you know, we took out the funding source for the senior program from Free Cash in the veterans program. So there is some things that we really need to know, and I really want to make sure we as a community get this right. So as far as acceptance goes, general law, Chapter 59, subsection 5K, which is for the senior program, or general law, Chapter 59, subsection 5N, veterans is by a vote of municipal legislative body, subject to charter, general law, four, subsection eight. So first thing we need, a municipal may either, both or neither of the two statutes, effective date, we have to vote the effective date. The acceptance vote should explicitly state the fiscal year in which the program under the particular statute will first be available. So I would make a motion to have it the first fiscal year the program to be available, calendar year fiscal 2026.
Okay. So who, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
There isn't a notice of acceptance and revocation, we don't need to get into that, but as far as the veterans go, an individual must be a veteran for everybody at home in the general law, Chapter 4, subsection 6, clause 43, to earn a property tax abatement under a program for veterans established on the general law, Chapter 59, subsection 5N. If the veteran has a service-connected disability or is deceased, the veteran's spouse or surviving spouse may earn the abatement instead. So I think that's important for some of the veterans at home. Under ownership, we have to do this as well. More than one, more than one qualifying owner of the posse may earn an abatement unless local program rules limit multiple abatements on a posse. I don't know if the board has any interest in saying, you know, only one abatement from one. So if you have two spouses, I don't know, Brad, you want to talk about that? You said something to me on the phone.
So, so, with again, as, I'm a veteran, my wife's not. So for me to go up and go, hey, I'm going to get the $1,500 and go to the work-off program, my wife's going to do the same thing. Well, now that's $3,000 for households, and I don't think that's what we're looking at here. We're looking at the same as a senior work-off, which is $1,500 a year, and that's it. So I don't know if you need wording in there so people don't take advantage of it and try and get $3,000 out of it instead of $1,500. Yeah, I don't know.
So the cost could magnify dramatically, right? So I think we should just say.
You can choose which one you want.
One, one person, one person per household is eligible for the veterans' work-off.
Or the household in general is only good for $1,500.
I'll, I'm going to get to that. It'll, it'll kind of go to this, but I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, when I got this, it was kind of crazy, and there's another thing that we need to do on, on the demensile. The volunteer does not have to be demensiled on their property to qualify for either volunteer work-off, abatement program, unless the municipality adopts a local rule requiring demensile. So my question would be to the board is, do we want to require a demensile rule, meaning living in the home? I personally say yes.
I agree with you. Absolutely.
So, there you go. I'll make a motion to have the demensile requirement for the veterans' work-off program.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. So as I read, multiple employers, there is an opinion issued by the state, oh, this goes to you, Brad. There was an opinion issued by the State Ethics Commission, EC-COI-04-04, point four, that indicates municipal employees may participate in the property tax work-off abatement program under certain circumstances, and the opinion can be assessed at, and it gives you a www.mass.gov page. Municipal, I forwarded, Brad, you're just talking, so you can give it to everybody. Municipal employees seeking to participate in the program and advised to check with municipal council or the State Ethics Commission before doing so. The person performing the work must have a legal obligation to pay the tax. However, a city or town by vote of its legislative body, subject to its charter, may vote to allow a proof representative to perform the services for an eligible taxpayer physically unable to provide services to this city or town. So if somebody is a disabled veteran, we need to make, I'll make a motion to allow somebody in the household to work on behalf of that disabled veteran that lives in the same household.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. The trust, I talked to Mr. Fish, our veterans' agent, and I told him, he had mentioned something about a senior program, so I think there's people that do do our senior program, you want to listen to this, because again, this is from municipal finance law, and he said it's not being done as a trustee, but being a trustee of the property on which the tax to be abated is assessed and is sufficient for the senior or veteran to participate in property tax work-off programs under general law, Chapter 59, subsection 5K, or general law, Chapter 59, subsection 5N, because the trustee is under legal obligation to pay tax on the property. So that's something that Mr. Fish and I had a conversation on, and he was led to believe that the seniors, if they, if their houses are a trust, they can't participate in this program. They absolutely can't participate in the program. I just wanted to make sure that.
I was disinformed.
Everybody understands that.
Right.
So volunteer employment limitations. Eligible taxpayers must provide service to the city or town to which they owe taxes in order to earn the property tax credit under either program. Eligible taxpayers may not provide service to a regional school district since they do not owe taxes to the district which will employ them or to a nonprofit organization. I will read only cover. All program expenses are budgeted in the overlay rather than through appropriations. Therefore, the amounts needed to operate the program should be considered when the municipal budget is developed. The assessor should factor in the amounts needed to fund the programs when determining overlay needs for each year.
Got it.
So we voted the eligibility date, and any limitation on eligibility to tax deduction for volunteers demensile, we would require them to, residing in the property, we did, to be abated, not more than $1,500 per household. So I'll make that motion, just to make sure that's standing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And that's pretty much it, Brad. I don't think I, I think I touched on a, there are things, but it doesn't need to pertain to the people in the general public. As I said, Mr. Chairman, I did forward this over to Mr. Fish, so he can, he can go, he can post this, and it's important for everybody to understand, even as senior work-off programs for our department, there are some tax liabilities and how these abatements do take effect. So if you work in the, if you started working in the calendar year fiscal 2026, that credit for the whole year gets applied to your first tax bill committed for fiscal year 2027. So it's like a forward-looking thing. You work in this year, you get tax credit in the following year. So I think there was some confusion around all that. I'm glad that I could work with Ms. Koska, our assessor, on this and get this information out to everybody as soon as possible, because the last thing I want to do is have a veteran come in, all our seniors come in and start working for us, and then they'll blindside it at the end of fiscal year. So I'm glad that we got this information put out to all you folks, and I think we need to, Mr. Kelly, if we can circulate this document, Mr. Fish has a copy of it in a PDF, if we can circulate this document, treasurer needs to have a copy of it, but circulate it to all departments, so anybody that's going to take advantage of our senior veteran work-off program, there's information, and he and Holly do that, keep track of ours.
And since we administer it down at the COA for the senior program, we'll have it down there too.
I'll make sure it gets out to everybody.
All right.
Thanks, thanks, Brad.
All right.
Did you have your hand up for anything else, Brad?
No.
Oh, okay. You were just waving to me. Thank you.
Hi, Brad.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Tom, yeah, I guess with his, for the buyback thing.
Okay. Yeah, Chiefs and Chair here, is that what you want to chat about, or?
I, I was just asked to be here in case there were any questions on any of my articles or on the budget.
Did you want to just wrap up the rest of open session, or you were?
Well, I guess.
We're pretty done.
You got a few other things, like the town's assistant treasurer, collector MOA, I think right, was not kind of part of the overall conversation, so.
I don't have anything for the fire chief.
Well, I don't.
So executive session.
I can answer questions if you have them on that request, but other than that.
I think it's pretty straightforward, so.
Just, just in case there were questions on the budget or on the articles.
Class dismissed.
Very good.
Thanks.
All right, we've got two executive sessions. Executive session one, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, section 28, subsection 83, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, police contract, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and so the chair, and the chair so declares, and the board will return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Roll call vote, Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
Mr. Hinckley?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Executive session number two, executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, section 21, subsection 83, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, steel workers ask me, fire EMS. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and the board will return to public session at the conclusion of the executive session. Roll call vote, Mr. Gasper?
Yes.
Mr. Hinckley?
Yes.
And I am a yes. We are now in executive session, but we will return. All right. Motion carries. First item is assistant treasurer, collector, after much deliberation, gentlemen, is there a motion to stock Tinas of Tavas at the salary of $62,000 per year, which the board has determined is necessary to fill the position of assistant treasurer, collector, with her as the best candidate?
So moves.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. She can start on Monday. Next item we have is department vacation carryover slash buyback request.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I could get through this pretty quick. I'll make a motion to carry five days for council and agent director as a request.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next request is from the treasurer, collector, to carry seven hours and make a motion to approve seven hours for the treasurer, collector.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
To be used by August 1st. And the next one is from the golf course for superintendent and the assistant superintendent. I'll make a motion to buy back on both, or the option to carry over a week, but to be used before August 1st.
Second. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we have one from Mr. Bobola, building department, motion to buy back five days, and motion for five days carryover to be used by August 1st.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then we have a request from the fire chief because of all the shifts he's been covering, he's been unable to take some time, so motion to buy 36 hours of the chief's time.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, that is it. Gentlemen, we have, we still have some unfinished budget items to do. I propose that we meet Thursday morning, is that, or afternoon? What would be better for you, gentlemen?
So I'm still up in the air. I have an appointment in Duxbury at 11:00.
Okay.
But I'm trying to get it covered right now.
Okay. I think we have a little wiggle room. If we had to go to Friday with the printer, would that be better?
You just, we just need to postpone Monday, not yet Tuesday.
Thursday, I'd say Thursday, just in case we have to.
We don't have to do it a little later, Bob, like.
So getting back from.
I'm not available after 3:00 PM.
Okay.